Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, August the 16th, 2022. We welcome you here this evening. Glad we have a great crowd here. Of course, it's a very special night and we have some special honors coming up in a few minutes, so thank you all for being with us. In a few minutes, we will go to our moment of silence and we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Before we do that, I would like to talk to you just a minute about several people that we have lost over the last little bit that we want to have some special prayers for tonight and your thoughts and prayers. Over this past week, we lost former council member Freddie Moore passed away. Freddie was on our council for over 10 years. Freddie was the owner of, many of you remember Dayvols Drugstore and so many great things. He was a wonderful person, served as up until 2003 on our council, was a mayor pro tem also during that time, but Freddie will be sorely missed, great leader in our community, and so we will certainly miss him. And also, the same week before, we lost Captain Sam Smith, captain of the Lenore Fire Department and chief of the Gamel Fire Department and also the chief and starting chief at Hobriteen High School's Fire Academy. Sam was an over 30-some years of service to the city and in the county area in fire, loved it dearly, so we will keep, please keep Sam's family and Freddie's family and your thoughts and prayers as we go through these incoming weeks. We will certainly miss them and what they meant to our city. So, very honored to know both of them very well and we will miss them. So, if you will, please rise now, our moment of silence and our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first order of business, we have a very special recognition tonight. And Scott, what was the thing you just told me a few minutes ago? How do you rescue policemen out of an elevator? The fire department. We have a very special award tonight. The Golden Ticket Award is being presented tonight to our fire department for service given on August the 4th, 2022, as they rescued four of our policemen out of their elevator in the police building. I don't know who was in the elevator, Chief, you probably know, but anyway, it, we have a very special award and Chief, will you come up and we're gonna present you with this award?
He may get a speeding ticket on the way home, but...
What's that?
He may get a speeding ticket.
Traffic checkpoint coming.
If you get a speeding ticket on the way home, I'm sorry. But there you go, Golden Ticket Award presented by our department. You know, this is fun and we know you guys have a wonderful relationship together and anytime we can, one of everybody, we'd love to do it, but this is something that we all had a good time with. The man behind you though, he'll probably just count my ears.
He's guilty, he looks guilty.
But anyways, appreciate what you do and I know that sometimes you just gotta have a little fun with it and this is one of those things that was fun. So you can hang that in the fire department and remember that you rescued our police department.
I think we need a picture, we definitely need a picture. I think the text I got from my woman named Chief Hare was effective, you know, policemen need heroes too. I just said, we're always here for you and your staff too. When I found out there was people in the elevator and what we tried didn't initially work and they said, we called the fire department. My initial, I said, is everybody okay? And they said, yes. And then I said, did we really have to call the fire department? I'm never gonna hear the end of that. We do have a great relationship.
We are Team Lenore, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, that is truly Team Sportsman's Jeep right there together. We appreciate what all of our departments do, but thank you guys. The red and the blue, you know, that's always a good thing we have going there. Tonight also, we have very special recognition as we, tonight we'll have our Dyson Kendall, American Legion Post 29, will recognize the firefighter of the year and the police officer of the year. The firefighter of the year, Lieutenant Scott Brawley, is our firefighter of the year and congratulations to Lieutenant Brawley. And our police officer of the year is Sergeant Martin Crisp. I'm gonna ask Erto, the commander of the American Legion Post, Dyson Kendall Post, to come up and if you will, introduce all the gentlemen who are with you tonight. We're honored to have you guys. We had you here a couple of weeks ago to honor our 100th year of our post, but glad to have you back tonight with these honored special awards that you do every year for us.
Always a pleasure to be here.
You're always glad to have you.
We were gonna present the firefighter of the year, but the police chief gave me five bucks to move him out. I'll probably get the ticket going home. Yeah, we started this, I don't know, I think I'll credit Woody, Henry Woody Smith was a commander when I got to the legion and he had kind of initiated this award of recognizing the firefighter of the year and the police officer of the year where we, they submit nominations from the department and all we do is we just go buy the plaques and bring them out and have them present them. So, each of their department heads is gonna say something nice about why they're there. And one of the pillars of the American Legion is national security and national security starts with local security. And we try to do this to recognize individuals who have excelled and I'm certain that it's a difficult decision for the department chiefs to come up with a name with so many quality people and generally they download it to somebody other things so they could say, it wasn't me that did this, but they, and so we also do the awards for the Caldwell County Sheriff's Deputy of the Year and the EMT of the Year. So, we do that at the county commissioners. So, without further ado, I'm gonna ask Police Chief Brent Phelps to come up and...
You want my bucks back?
Yeah. Thank you, Eric. What he said is very true. It is tough when you have a building full of great men and women that work really hard day in, day out, to pick just one person. And we try to rotate it around, but we look at, you know, just different characteristics and it's a tough, it's a tough choice, but it's a blessing to have the number of talented people that we've got in our building, in all the city departments and we're very fortunate. Tonight, we're gonna honor Sergeant Martin Crisp. I'm gonna read some of this and then I'll say just a couple of things. There's a lot here and I'm putting some of his military stuff in there as well and that's as much for some of the friends and family that he has here, because a lot of times, we don't go home and we don't, you know, brag to our friends and family about the things we've done and the things we've accomplished. And so sometimes, at our retirements or at special events, this is, this is the only time friends and family hear some of this. So, I'm gonna read through this to go over. Martin went into the Marine Corps in June of 2000. He served in the United States Marine Corps for eight years. During his time of service, the medals and decorations he was awarded, he was awarded the Combat Action Ribbon, he was awarded two United States Marine Corps Good Conduct Medals, he was awarded two Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals, three Sea Service Deployment Ribbons, if I can say that, three Iraqi Campaign Medals, a Global War on Terror Medal, National Defense Service Medal, the Navy Motorious Unit Commendation Ribbon, two certificates of commendation, a letter of appreciation, a notorious mask, and four Rifle Expert badges in his eight years in the United States Marine Corps. He graduated BLE-T here at Caldwell in May of 2010, where he attended in May of 2010, and we hired him in December of 2010 as an officer. Since he's been with us, he's been a patrol officer, he's been a corporal, he's been a detective, and now he's one of our patrol sergeants. He has obtained his intermediate, his law enforcement intermediate certificate from training and standards. He's obtained his advanced training certificate from training and standards. He's received a golden ticket before from the city. He's attended the Police Law Institute. He's also a TASER instructor, a SCAD instructor, a physical fitness instructor, and a general instructor for us. He serves in our special response team and our honor guard team. One of the things that he's involved in that I'm proud of is he was asked by, to be a member on one of the boards out of Training Standards. They created a Subject Control Arrest Techniques Advisory Board and there's 13 agencies from the state that are represented on that board and he was asked to serve on that for us. We're the smallest agency on the board. You have Raleigh, Charlotte, the Highway Patrol, Wildlife, some very big agencies and they saw in him the characteristics, his knowledge and expertise and I wish I could say they liked Chief Brent Phelps and wanted somebody from Lenore, but they wanted Martin Crisp and I'm honored that he's serving on that and representing us at a state level. Some of the other things that he's proud of, he grew up here, here in Lenore and in Caldwell County. Martin could have went anywhere in the state to work in law enforcement, but he chose to come home. He chose to come back to the community he had grown up in and have a purpose in his community. He was a graduate from Hobriteen High School. He's served as football coach in the Gamel District. He served as a scout master in Collettsville. When you ask him what he's the most proud of, he says trying, because that's what we do as husbands, is try to be a good husband, but he said the stuff he's the most proud of is trying to be a good husband and a father to three, and he has a fourth one on the way. And I was also told it's his wife's birthday, so happy birthday. But I get a lot of calls from time to time about Martin and his interaction and he has a, he treats people the right way with respect. Now, he's got some skills and if, you know, he has to defend himself, he's pretty proficient at that, but most of the time, he doesn't have to do that because he knows how to interact with people and communicate with people even in tough situations and he does a great job for us. And so, it's my honor to recognize him as the post officer of the year.
Council members, mayor, city manager, thank you. My family, thank you for being here. My shift, thank you for being here. My lieutenant, my captain, thank you. Yeah, I don't know if there's enough room in here for my head now with the way Chief introduced me. I'm really honored for this, this award. I'm very proud of my military history. I'm very proud to be a police officer here for Lenore, but more so, I'm proud to be a husband and a dad. And I'm very blessed to have them here. So, again, thank you very much, council members, city manager, mayor, thank you.
Introduce your family for us, will you?
My wife Jennifer.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Gracie's on the way. That's my daughter Emma, my daughter Sadie, and my son Hayden, and then everyone knows my mom, Susan, and then Ms. Alice next to her, she is my daughter's godmother. And Ms. Hall, thank you so much for being here. Sorry to forget you, but thank you so much for being here. It means the world to me that you're here, so thank you, thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. We're gonna shoot a picture with, we do fire, we'll do it all together.
Let me get a look at the chief, the chief, I'll hand it to you. We'll do the picture after you do the fire. Chief Hare.
All right. Just a note, Freddie Moore was a member of the American Legion Post 29, so we miss him.
Yes.
So, again, the people that go where we don't wanna go or can't go, the guys who run in for the, into the fire when we're running out, and the guys who rescued the cops from the elevator. Chief Hare?
It's gonna be a while for that.
First off, mayor, council, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing the American Legion to do this every year and give this recognition. It's truly an honor to do that and especially, I want to thank American Legion for carrying this program on. It means a lot to us and I know it does the police department as well, so just want to thank you for your efforts as how we're having the freedom to do this award and have these meetings like we do. So, thank you first and foremost. But if you will, this year, our department has selected Lieutenant Scott Brawley to receive the American Legion firefighter of the year award and just like Chief Phelps had said, it's very, very tough and that's an honor in our department to make tough decisions to do these recognitions. Lieutenant Brawley was selected not for just one thing, but a sum of everything he does for our department and community consistently. Lieutenant Brawley is the type of personnel that department heads dream of employing. He's absolutely the most selfless person I've ever encountered. He never takes credit for anything he does. He does it for the people, which is a true public servant. His work ethic and attitude is outstanding. He never complains about anything and always shows very appreciation for everything he receives and performs every aspect of his job to the fullest just because it needs to be done. He always goes above and beyond in every facet for our department. Lieutenant Brawley assists with our truck apparatus maintenance. He is the lead technician for our SCBA maintenance. He's a member of the department's honor guard. He oversees the department's concessions. He volunteers readily to mentor our new employees to help mold them and he also volunteers to work with difficult leaders to help keep shifts in line with the department's values. He spends countless hours performing work off duty as well. Lieutenant Brawley was instrumental in the remodeling of the kitchen at Station 2 and anybody that's been in there. And he was also the one that built the table that now sits where everybody eats dinner at Station 2. That's just some of his abilities and a lot of that was done off duty and he never wanted nothing for it, especially the recognition. Lieutenant Brawley is also very involved in his community. He has, he serves as a mentor with Communities in School Program, is a bus driver for the school system, and along with his wife Amy, helped organize field trips and fundraisers to help underprivileged children. He has also helped coach youth baseball for years in the Kings Creek community to help kids develop skills in sports, but assists them with building a strong character and providing life lessons that will direct them in their futures. For all this and because he does not seek recognition is why we have selected Lieutenant Scott Brawley to be this year's American Legion firefighter of the year and to give him the recognition he so deserves and hopefully, an understanding of how much he is appreciated by our department and especially me. So, congratulations Lieutenant Brawley.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it. The mayor said it earlier, we're a team here, we're all a team, so there's no way I could do the stuff that I do without the guys being involved with me. I'm lucky, I've been on shifts with, I've had good, good people to work with. When I come in off duty, I've got good people to work with there, so it's not just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take all the credit because I couldn't do, I couldn't do any of this without, without the rest of the guys. They deserve this just about as much as I do. I do appreciate it, I'm deeply honored and it means a lot. Thank y'all.
Gentlemen, I can't think of two gentlemen that deserved this anymore than I've known Lieutenant Brawley and Sergeant Crisp since he was a little fellow for a long time and they are, really, they are just, they typify what we, we hope we have in police and fire in our, in our city and across the country. Thank you for what you do. You never get enough praise, you never get enough thank yous, we know that, but I want you to know, we, we this council in this city and county really appreciate what you do every day to protect our people, so we're honored to be a part of that. So, right now, if you will, let's go down and we're gonna shoot a picture with everybody and...
There's no way I could do this without her.
Okay. I was gonna say, we better introduce, anybody you have with you and family, thank you for that.
Like I say, she gives up, she gives up a lot of us time for me doing, doing things that I need to do. Without her, I couldn't do any of it.
Chief Crisp, Lieutenant, come down and we're gonna bring the council, all the legion guys.
I wonder if we should have all those pieces, you know, can we get them all?
Let's get the officers and lieutenants.
Thank you, thank you, council.
Behind you, good luck to you.
Let's try down here and see how, I mean, when you stand up there, you're kinda far in our way.
We're gonna do it here.
Gentlemen, congratulations, congratulations.
Oh, sir, thank you, sir. Come on in, we're getting a picture.
Right, you come in.
We're gonna have to get three rows in there.
Well, you do that?
Thank, so let's get a, can you come right over here behind her?
Sure.
I'll make sure I can see her if I can.
Susan, if you wanna get a picture, you get a picture wherever you want them. We'll wait till Joshua comes.
He's ready.
I wanna move you to the other side, let's go right over here. Okay, okay, that's fine, too.
I'll let you do all the one, then I'll take the other.
I can see everybody, all right.
See everybody?
I can. All right, one, two, three, I'm gonna do two without and two with the flash. One, two, three, cheese. Maybe I'll do three. All right, now let's do a flash. One, two, three, cheese. One more of the flash.
You wanna get another one? Thank you.
More pictures, anybody?
I was so overcome with the emotion of the moment.
Ralph's got that thing sitting low.
This stuff works, dang if it doesn't.
Dang, yeah.
It smells like, smells like alcohol, like a drink.
You're all welcome to stay if you want to, but I don't blame you if you leave.
Is that yours? Which one is yours? She called me the other day.
That one.
Called me about some financing.
Yeah, yeah. We need to, I hope they're working on it.
Oh, really?
Again, thank you very much for being with us and congratulations to our officer of the year, both of them.
Just flick the lights, that's what we do, is we flick the lights. Okay. We could love and kiss all the...
Does anybody do that to you, Church?
No.
Thank y'all.
Or just get up.
Just get up.
All right, at this time, before we move on, I'm gonna ask Mr. Hildebrand if he'll introduce our newest Operations Manager of Public Utilities and our Operations Manager of Public Works. You introduce them both and I gotta tell you...
Yeah, I wanna, Services Director Radford Thomas is out of town today, so I have the pleasure to go back and introduce Jeff Church. Jeff, you wanna stand? Jeff, as the mayor said, is our new Public Utilities Operations Services Manager. He comes to us from Caldwell County Schools and we're one of the few people that are glad you retired from the county, so it's just a common city in Lenore, but welcome. This is his second week, so he came back for week two, we're proud of that. And then also Jonathan Hogan, we introduced last time, is our Public Works Operations Manager and he came back for a second month, so we're proud of you as well and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad you took it.
Glad to have you.
I had to hide from Dr. Phipps when I went to your retirement party just to make sure I wasn't ambushed.
Well, we didn't do that. You retired first, didn't we? We're glad to have you, Jeff, Dr. Church, and Jonathan too, of course. Thank you guys for what you're doing and I know this whole new department has formed and with Radford kinda leading that, it's gonna make, we're gonna see really, really good things happening. Already did, now we're gonna see even better, so thank you for all you're doing for that. All right, we'll move on then. We don't have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda, which consists of several items. Item A, or minutes of the city council meeting of August 2nd, 2022. Item B is a capital project budget ordinance. This is for, which we're very excited to say, the sports lighting project at Matt Cook Stadium. This will be for approving the capital project budget ordinance in the amount of $213,522 for the sports lighting project at Matt Cook Stadium. This project is part of the improvements at the campus at the historic Lenore High School, so very proud that money has been raised and put together. Item C is the change order number one for the crossroads sewer project. This is a recommendation for approval of change order number one, recommended by McGill Associates for the crossroads sewer improvements project to reflect a net increase in the contract amount of $25,509.48. Item D is revised capital project budget ordinance for the crossroads sewer capital project. Request is for, to adopt a revised capital project budget ordinance for that sewer project as submitted. The revised budget shows the impact of the bid award, the loan changes, and the change order. Item E is a final offer to purchase real property. This is for Harris Street and Wheeler Street. Recommendations is for approval of the final offer to purchase in the amount of $2,000 as submitted by Mr. Michael Corpening, 1801 Hood's Creek Road in Lenore, to purchase six vacant lots owned by the city of Lenore adjacent to the properties owned by Mr. Corpening, which are, item one, NC PIN 2749589039, parcel ID 0617-3-30. This is 508 Harris Street. Item two is NC PIN 2749588050, parcel 0617-3-32, 509A Harris Street. Item three is PIN 2749578907, ID 0617-3-33, 514 Wheeler Street. Item four is PIN 2749577938, parcel 0617-335, 516B Wheeler Street. Number five is, PIN number 2749577981, ID parcel is 0617-3-34, is 516 Wheeler Street. And item six is PIN 2749577906. is 0617-3-34, is 516 Wheeler Street. And item 6 is PIN 2749577906, parcel 0617-3-65, that's 518B Wheeler Street. The legal advertisement for the notice of purchase, of offer to purchase real property was published in the news topic on Friday, August the 5th. The recommendation by, is for the City Council to accept the final offer to purchase because the city did not receive any upset bids. That is your A through E items. I will open it up for any discussion of the consent agenda items or approval, or whatever you want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A through E as submitted. And I congratulate you for not missing a number as you called those out.
Thank you.
All on it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Presswood that we approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nobody opposed. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that on the stadium lights, we did get the final amount of money for that. So, we'll make a recognition of those folks that donated to that project, but we did get the final amount, the 85. Yeah, but the last amount, the 83, 522, we needed, we got, we got that last week, so.
Very good.
We do appreciate the work with the Caldwell Rotary Club on helping put that together as well. That was a good project and we're proud of. That is kind of the first step of moving forward with the campus project at historic Lenore High School. So, a lot of things yet to come, but that is gonna be really good to have the lights back and be able to use that for a lot of different things. So, we're excited about it. Okay, thank you for that. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens that we will now recognize. And I will ask Mr. Delka, if you want to come forward, please give your name and address so that we have it for our records.
I will do it. Thank you, Mayor Gibbons and, uh, council members. My name is Joseph Delk IV. I think I know all of you. My address is 416 Kentwood Street here in Lenore. I have been very vocal over the last several months about trying to find a building in downtown. And I've been vocal in my frustrations. One of the solutions is for another day. I still think it needs to be addressed, but today I'm, I'm looking at something more specific. The, I've been here for 12 years, 11 years. I, I've established a practice. I'm, I'm moving into real estate. In fact, I hired a paralegal today to move into real estate. I'm gonna be doing real estate closings and that is my ultimate goal in trying to find a building. Because where I am is great and I'm, I'm in the building in Harper, Jesse Plaster's building above the, what used to be the CrossFit Gym. It's a rental, it's fine, but it's not what I need long-term. I want something of my own. I've been trying to buy a building and I've gotten pushed back in various ways. It's basically, oh, we're not looking to sell, kind of things. Even vacant buildings, buildings have been empty for 15 years. Jesse, though, has a building on H. Lewis Price Alleyway. You may have noticed over the last month or so that the facade of part of it was torn down, windows were put in, and the, and the door that was facing the alley has been rotated around the side of the building. That third of the building is being purchased by somebody else. He's gonna renovate that. I think the plan is to make it an Airbnb, so bring more people into downtown. My plan and discussions I've had with Jesse is to buy the other two-thirds, which is significantly bigger, and it will be perfect for me. The problem is, the door faces the alleyway. I can't rotate the door around like the other guy did because it's a 20-foot drop on the other side of the building. That's where I want to put my real estate practice. I want to be downtown. I want to be walking distance to restaurants. I want to have a presence in downtown that, you know, cities like Hickory and, and even Morganton, as the courthouses are thinking about moving out, you know, we're gonna kill downtown and I don't want to do that. I want to stay downtown. I want to be close. The building for me, in my opinion, is perfect. The price is good. It will take renovations, which is kind of where I'm, I'm going with this. The problem is, the alleyway is open to through traffic. I know it was established that years ago. One of the reasons it stayed open when this came up years ago is because of the ambulance station and they could always have access down the alleyway. Well, the ambulance station's been torn down. There's no purpose of the alley from a city's point of view anymore. My concern is, is both personal and business. I'm in, the entrance to my space is through, is, is on the alleyway. You go through a little side alcove. I don't like my family to visit me at work. And it's primarily, well, it's the only reason that I don't like it is because I don't want my kids running out of traffic. If you've ever stood on that alleyway, and if you haven't, go stand on the alleyway for about 10 minutes. You will see the cars coming 25 miles an hour blowing through that alleyway. Bobby Keller owns the building on the other side. He comes out the back door with his dog. His dog has been nearly hit multiple times. He has to grab the dog when he opens the door so it doesn't run out and get hit. Seth Stillwell, who also owns one of the buildings, has been complaining about it for years about people coming down the alleyway. I've not, and Jesse, I know Jesse Plaster, who owns all the other buildings, they're all in agreement to close, to close it, or, in my opinion, is to put a pin in that bottleneck and basically close it off to, to through traffic. So, Seth and his businesses can come in from Harper and all the other businesses, including the church and Seth Williams and whoever bought the, the building on Mulberry, and I don't know who that is. They will still have access. They still have the parking lot, everything. Basically, all the people that are connected to that alley don't like that alley. It's dangerous. It's, it's a city expense you have to maintain it. And the only purpose, the only purpose I can deem that's useful is people avoiding the stoplight. And I don't think that's a legitimate city purpose for keeping an alleyway open. If that's the only reason people are doing that, then let's change the stoplight. About a month, a month and a half ago, when they were tearing the facade off part of the building, they closed the alleyway for a week or two. The world didn't come to an end. No, I, as far as I know, nobody complained about it. They just went to the stoplight and turned left. If, if, if I proceed forward with the purchase of this building, I'm gonna need to close that road significant amount of time because we're gonna have, you know, vehicles there, we're gonna be dealing with the facade. That road's gonna be closed for a significant amount of time anyway. At this point, I cannot find a need the city has to keep that alley open. But I can find 100 reasons to close it. And the primary one is safety. Right now, my practice is a lot of phone calls, emails, texts, stuff like that. I don't have a lot of clients coming to my office, but even then, I get nervous when they, when they come because they're gonna have to come down the alley or they're either gonna have to park on the alleyway or walk across the street from the Walgreens parking lot. My plan is, as I'm moving into real estate, is I'm gonna have a lot more clients coming in and out. And the last thing I need is a client who's just bought a house that is super happy and excited. They just got the keys. They go running out the door and smack. They get hit by a car. So, the only option is I can go somewhere else. I can, I've, I've, I've gotten frustrated with Lenore. And the building owners downtown, it's, it's not a matter of money. It's a matter of, I've owned this building for 15 years. I don't want to sell it. I don't know what I'm gonna do with it. I don't have any plans for it. I just wanted to leave it empty. Or I, I store stuff in it. And that frustrates me. And I don't want to have to look at Hudson or, or Sawmills or other downtown communities that I can go to. I want to stay in Lenore. And that's where the courthouse is. That's where the Register of Deeds is. But I'm kind of hitting a point where I'm getting frustrated and this building is perfect, except for the alleyway. And I realize this is, this is, this is a selfish request, but I also think it, it could benefit all the building owners on, on the way, or all, or, or all the, on the alleyway. The ones I've spoken to were all for this idea. The only complaints I've gotten are people that are gonna have to go to the stoplight. Just tonight, Susan Strong, who's, doesn't hold back, I mentioned to her the reason I was here. She goes, no, no, no. I like cutting through the alleyway. Avoid the light. And, and I get that. I know there's gonna be pushback and there's gonna be complaints. But a, a moment of inconvenience for drivers to go to follow the traffic pattern the way you're supposed to is, is not justification for putting citizens and people downtown at risk. There was a talk at some point about putting a speed bump. I don't think that would help. And, and there may be instances where the building owners need to use that alleyway to have a thoroughfare, and that's why I suggested one of the pins with the lock at the bottom that can be lowered down and kind of the same way they have at Borough Walking Park. That is a simple solution and it's, and then it's just education of, don't go the alleyway. And, and, and I will guarantee that the, it will resolve itself within a week or so of people understanding they can't go through there. There're gonna be a lot of people turning around and going back the other way, but I think if there's some education. If the council is not interested in closing it immediately, or there's a hesitation, my suggestion is close it for a month. See what happens. And just, you know, let people know it's gonna be closed for a month. And then, and, you know, and, you know, I'm not all-knowing. If you close it for a month, there could be some big issue that comes up with it. And I understand that. And if there's a big issue and there's a good reason to keep it open, then I'll just come out, keep my mouth shut and I'll figure out another solution. But I, I cannot rack my brain anymore and find a legitimate reason to keep that alleyway open. If the city wants to keep their right-of-way there, fine, because it, it may change later. There may be a new need for it later. But I would just ask the council, and, and I've, I've talked to Public Works. I don't know exactly which organization runs the streets, but it has to be a council decision. It can't, you know, they can, they can close it temporarily, but it has to ultimately be a council decision. And I don't know the legal mechanism to, to go that way. I don't know if there's a committee that has to go through an investigation or a study or whatever it is. But I, I just want the council to start that process and, and to see if it's feasible to close that alleyway. Because my plan is to buy the building within the next month or so and then start renovations. And I would really like to have, to, to not worry about the workers or my clients or my kids getting hit in that alleyway moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We certainly appreciate this. Most of the people that need to hear this are here and have heard it so that we can take it under consideration of what to do. This, it's been discussed a number of times. We made changes to it. You know, we changed it to one way. It comes in only off of.
That was two ways at one point?
It's one way. Yeah. You can't go in off of Harper Avenue.
That was two ways at one point?
Makes no sense. Yeah, it's, it's.
It was tough for two cars to pass it.
Well, they couldn't.
But it, but it was open that way for a long time. And we changed it to one way.
He's got a great point now that emergency services is not using it.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know what I can do, but anything that can be done, I mean, it's important to me. I've, you know, anybody that listens, I would, I would complain about it. So, anything I can do as a citizen, I'm more than happy to do, you know, if it, if it, if it makes the process go quicker, but, but I just.
One thing we'll have to consider is there's, all the property owners along Mulberry will have to be, you know, we need to find out what all their, I'm sure their feelings are about this.
Right.
Because a lot of them use it as their back entrance or whatever, whether they need it for through or what. We, you know, that's the thing we'll have to do.
But, but there's a, I mean, it can still be used. It's just the access points would be, it wouldn't be a throughway.
It's essentially, if you, if you close the bottleneck, it becomes two parking lots. And you've got full access to the church. You've got, Seth has full access to his property.
From one end to the other.
Right. You either come in off of Harper into Seth's parking lot area, or you come in on West Avenue into, back to the church and, and that area.
Good. What we'll do, we'll thank you, we'll take it under advisement and, and turn it over to all those to, to study about it. So.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, we are still in the request of any petitions. Anyone else, like everybody else is here as our staff, so I don't think we have any others on that. So, thanks a lot for that. All right, we'll move on. We do not have any reports of our boards and commissions, so we'll move on to the reported recommendation of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Tonight, we have a few items for information. The Southern Sundowner Four Mile Race is scheduled for Saturday, August 20th. That begins at 7:00 PM in downtown Lenore. And you can find more information at our website, downtownlenornnc.com. The planning board will meet on Monday, August 22nd, 5:30 in these chambers. The committee, the whole meet, will meet on Tuesday, August 23rd, 3rd floor City Hall at 8:30 AM. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, August 31st, at the airport at noon. As their crews in scheduled on Saturday, September 3rd, beginning at 3:00 PM in downtown Lenore. City offices will be closed on Monday, September 5th, in observance of Labor Day. And then the 36th Annual Sculpture Festival is scheduled to be held on Saturday, September 10th, 9 to 4:00 PM at TH Foothill Walking Park. Any questions on those items of information? All right, there's two items tonight for council action. The first is an acceptance and an offer to purchase real property, and that is at 2585 Collegeville Road. As you recall, about six years ago, we had a request from Ronnie Tig to acquire some property next to our landfill, property they had rented for a number of years. We sold that property then. He's come back now and had a survey and would like to acquire additional .90 acres of that property. It's a 33.42 acre tract, NC PIN 23, or 2831509864, and that's tax ID number 06253-1-1. They offer $750 for that. He's already spent $750 on the survey. If council desires to go forward, we'll start the advertisement process, 10-day upset bid period per the statute, and bring it back to you for decision at a later time, or in two weeks or three weeks. So.
Okay. You heard the.
And that property sold as is, as we did the past. Again, it's an old landfill. He understands that and he has a business beside of that, so.
And he already owns some property there.
Adjacent property.
Okay. Okay.
Was this a portion that was just somehow left off of the initial purchase or?
Yeah, he just decided he needed more property and had a survey to say, ask, what do you want to buy? And so he surveyed the portion of what he wanted and staff's looked at it. He actually met with Jared back eight, nine months ago, finally got the survey completed, and now he's come forward with the offer.
Okay. May I make a motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Perdue to accept the offer to purchase real property as presented by Mr. Hildebrand for 2585 Collegeville Road and the .0.90 acre of land for that tract. And that will be subject to a 10-day upset bid period on that. Any other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. All right.
The next item you have before you is a consideration of a quote from Stevens Fire Equipment for a purchase of a supplement custom rescue pumper. The cost of that is $695,054.64. This truck is a demo, which would speed up time of purchase and also be a discounted model from what you pay for a brand-new truck. The apparatus has a capacity of 1,500 gallons per minute and has a 1,000 gallon water tank, which is 250 gallons more than the current tank we have. This extra capacity will help us in some low-pressure areas of the city. We have funding for that through revenue replacement from the ARC funds we received. And Chief Harris here to encourage you, I guess, to go back and purchase this. But if you have questions, try to answer those. You have the specs in there, the truck. I think it's a nine-month turnaround if we decide to go forward with this.
The last one we bought was also a demo, was it not, Chief?
Correct. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
The difference in this one versus that one, we purchased 2013 demo truck in 2015. This truck is scheduled to come off the line in December. It is a southeast truck, so it'd only be showed in southeast. The, we checked some figures, approximately 3,000 miles maybe will be put on the vehicle versus 33,000 of the one we purchased the last time. This truck, we, I started specing this truck, and it's not my spec and it's not our department's spec. However, it is so close, it's like they was waiting on me to buy a truck. And again, the difference now is, is with everything with COVID, supply and demand, it's 28 to 30 months if we order a truck today. This one comes off in December. They show it around, there's a chance we get April, no later than May, we would receive the truck. The good thing about 3,000 miles, all the bugs should be worked out by then. Anything, when they're done demo, it goes back to the factory. Anything that happens to be wrong, they fix it there before we even take, uh, the truck. And again, this, like I said, it's almost identical. Three years ago, I shared my vision, what I was proposing for the city of Lenore. It's $204,000 increase from three years ago. Every June and January, there's been anywhere from a four to eight and a half percent increase, and that doesn't look to change. So. So, you're saying hurry? Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase the fire apparatus as presented.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to, for the proposal to purchase the fire apparatus demo rescue pumper truck as presented tonight for that amount, $695,000 plus. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I believe it carried. What do you think? Thank you.
Must be fire night here or something. I don't know.
Yeah, fire night, isn't it?
I know Chief Phelps is sitting by himself over here. Is there something?
Yes.
Sit over here alone.
All right. I believe we've taken care of most of the business. We'll move to any report or recommendations from our city attorney.
Nothing to report. Do have something for closed session. Shouldn't take too long.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll do that. As far as from mayor's office, I would like to call. As far as from mayor's office, I would like to call, to call your attention to the Caldwell, new Caldwell County book is out that's published. It's really, really good. The barn on the front, we found out, is from, in a barn in Collegeville, so that's leased in Caldwell County. That's great. We love that. And there's a lot of great articles in here that you ought to take a look at, especially about the Blue Bell and a lot of new businesses that have opened up. I think they've done a really good job with a lot of good things. So these are out now, so for '22, '23, so hope you enjoy that. And other than that, I don't have anything else. I have, how about any council members, anything to come before us tonight? Chrissy's in mourning.
I'm in mourning.
Her kids have gone to school and.
Empty nesting.
I don't know. She's empty nesting over there, so.
Trying to figure it out.
Yeah, we'll keep in our thoughts and prayers.
It does get a lot better.
I'm hoping. Everybody tells me that. I keep waiting on that.
Anything else from anybody that you want to report that's coming up? John, you looking at your phone? You got anything?
I'm looking at the House of Mugs. I thought that should be on the front.
Oh, the House of Mugs.
If you've not seen that.
I've got a picture in my phone of that.
It's a treasure, treasure of Caldwell County.
All right, if not, we do have a closed session. This will pursue it, pursue it. The North Carolina General Statute is 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 3. We'll enter into the closed session, discuss attorney and client privilege. We don't expect anything to come out of that.
Nope, just guidance.
Just guidance. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion for Councilmember Perdue to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're in closed session, and good evening, everyone.